Hello everyone and welcome to the Decaturish.com debate for the May 21st primary elections. I'm your host, editor and publisher, Dan Whizen Hunt. The forum this week is, tonight is for District One, DeKalb County Commission race, which includes Dunwoody, Chambly, Tucker and Doraville. The District One County Commission candidates are incumbent Robert Patrick. Robert, how are you, sir?
I'm doing good.
And former Doraville City Council member Andy Yeoman. Andy, how are you, sir?
I'm great. Thanks for being with me.
Thank you for joining us. So each candidate is going to have two minutes to make an opening statement and two minutes to answer each question. Just wanted to let you know that all of our elections coverage can be found at Decaturishvotes.com. And this forum is being streamed on Facebook Live and it's being streamed on Twitch as well. So you can watch it in both of those places. And then afterward, we're going to upload it to YouTube for later viewing. I'm going to go ahead and record it as well. So we can
Recording in progress.
Recording as well. So since Robert Patrick is the incumbent, we're going to give him a chance to start and then we're going to go to Andy and then we're going to go back and forth with who starts and who finishes. So if you'll let me pull up my timer real quick. All right, Robert Patrick, two minutes for your opening statement.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Dan, and thank you first of all for hosting this candidate forum. It's much appreciated. Also want to acknowledge Decaturish for its reporting over the years. So thank you very much for that. It has been an honor serving as your District One County Commissioner. In four short years, we have made a lot of accomplishments. When I first took office, we were still in the midst of the COVID pandemic and there was a backlog of citizen requests that needed to be completed. I worked with staff and prioritized replacing trash cans, fixing potholes, collecting dead deer up in Dunwoody, responding to stormwater complaints and all the while coordinating the vaccination efforts. In fact, the District One vaccination efforts were so successful that we were able to shut down all of Beaufort Highway at 285 because of the demand. I've been at, excuse me, I've been building a reputation for responsiveness and for working with everyone regardless if they live in the north or the south or anywhere else within District One. When I was first elected, I had not planned to seek the position of presiding officer. However, my colleagues quickly saw the value of someone that works collaboratively for the betterment of all residents of DeKalb County. It should be noted that as a freshman, I was the first time ever nominated to the position of presiding officer as well as the first representative from District One to be the presiding officer. I know that the county has a long history of north-south politics, but I believe that my service has been a testament to people who want progressive change and are tired of old-time politics. I represent people that expect the county to deliver on services and commitments, expecting a county that is responsive and accountable to the people and the businesses of DeKalb County. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Yeoman, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Sure. My name is Andy Yeoman and I'm running to be the next DeKalb County Commissioner for District One. As a dedicated community leader and advocate for change in DeKalb County, I'm deeply committed to serving the needs and advancing the well-being of all of our residents. As a twice-elected city council member, as Dan mentioned, economic development board director, planning commission chairperson in my day job, I'm a senior leader in information technology and security. I have a master's degree in public administration along with my executive MBA that I earned a number of years ago. I bring, I think I believe, a wealth of experience and a fresh perspective to address the challenges and seize this district's opportunities. From improving our local infrastructure to reforming and restoring trust in DeKalb County's public safety, to fostering economic development and promoting sustainable practices. I'm dedicated to making sure that DeKalb County is a better place for all living things, people and animals. Our district is diverse, as we know, it's dynamic and it deserves leadership that actually listens, that understands, and most importantly is accountable to those decisions. So that's why I'm here, to listen to you and learn from you, the residents, and lead with integrity, transparency and accountability. In one term on the city council, we actually did something about affordable housing. We actually made efforts to reform our courts and our police departments. I supported and authored solar and EV ordinances. Doraville's unprecedented economic development in the last four years is a monument really to the effort where all newly-elected officials actually work together and accomplish great things because of that unity. I'm ready to bring that record to DeKalb County and we have an unprecedented opportunity to bring back or to bring positive change to the county by electing a new majority of the DeKalb County Commissioners and a new CEO in May. But I need your vote to make that happen and I look forward to this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to start our first question with Andy Yeoman and Andy, incumbents sometimes don't draw challengers. Robert Patrick drew a challenger this year. What has Robert Patrick done or not done that compelled you to challenge him for his seat on the county commission? And I'll give Robert Patrick two minutes to respond.
Sure. So Robert Patrick is a friend of mine. He used to be my neighbor. He lived just a couple of blocks down from my house. I voted for Robert Patrick twice. I hosted a meet and greet in my house for Robert Patrick when he was a city council member, inviting my own neighbors to meet him and vote for him. It has been very frustrating, very, very frustrating the last four years, dealing with the county, not just specifically to the commissioner's office, but I think the commissioner's office can do more than it's doing to advocate on behalf of the residents of the district and to advocate on behalf of the cities that are, you know, District One is mostly incorporated. And quite frankly, I'm running because a lot of elected officials asked me to. Elected officials, not only at the city level, but at the county level, some of his colleagues. And it's, that's, that's why I'm here is, I think we've made, those weren't just empty words in my opening statement. I really think that we made a lot of great positive change because we had people that worked together and worked towards the common goal of DeKalb County and the city when I was on the city council and people saw that. And they asked me to run for the county commission seat.
Thank you. Robert Patrick, you have two minutes to respond.
Thank you very much. That is correct. In the past, I did have high regard for Andy, thought he was a good guy. He even had contributed $200 to my campaign back in the day. So, but you know, if we were to look at some of the things that Andy has put on his website about responsiveness, as soon as I get a complaint or concern that comes in, I immediately send it over to staff and ask them to begin working on it. Something that is not always readily understood is the fact that county commissioners are more of a policy driver and we have an elected CEO who is actually responsible for the day-to-day operations. And so while it can be frustrating to be able to not just pick up the phone and get something done immediately, by and large, I do have good success with helping out residents without any concerns that come up. When it comes to the issue of a fellow commissioner that had encouraged Andy to run against me as well, yes, I'm very familiar with that commissioner. And that commissioner has a has a history of sort of kicking dust up into the air, creating a lot of controversy and confusion and sort of obscuring the issues. And respectfully, I sort of feel like that's sort of Andy's perspective on governing as well. And so if the county wants to take a, if the residents want to go back to someone that governs like my predecessor, by all means, I understand that. But if you want someone that is reliable, responsive and accountable, then clearly I think you have to vote for me.
Thank you. Robert Patrick, in Andy Yeoman's Q and A, he brought up the number of ethics complaints that have been filed against you as a sitting commissioner. Can you respond to that? And then I'm going to give Andy two minutes to respond to that as well.
Absolutely. So and in my response, I noted that I'm the only commissioner that at our first zoning meeting acknowledged that I had received campaign contributions for applicants that were before the Board of Commissioners. My predecessor was in office when those applications were submitted. And so there was no, I guess, technical reason to explain or acknowledge that I had received campaign contributions. But I think that that's ultimately important and that gets to this notion of accountable behavior and responsible behavior. So yes, I missed filing two CCDRs, one in August of 2020 and then one in January of 2023. At the time, my mom was dying and I was going between Atlanta and Tampa to take care of her. Not an excuse. I am responsible. And when I spoke with state ethics, I was very clear. I take full responsibility. With the incident that happened in January 2023, I had a family member that had not one, but two near-death experiences. And so that was sort of, again, more of a priority. Unfortunately, you know, life does sometimes take advantage of us and you have to make a decision on what's the priority. So in that case, in both cases, I put my family first. When it comes to the other complaints, the 13 complaints that were filed, as presiding officer, we had a very controversial topic that had been brought to the Board of Commissioners. And there were some protesters that were not happy with the idea that they can only have one person speaking at a time. And as presiding officer, I ended up ejecting not one, but three of the individuals from the committee meeting. They in turn turned around and filed 13 ethics complaints against me. That was also dismissed or all 13 of those were dismissed. I should also add that the ethics item was also the result.
That's time. That's time. Andy Yeoman, two minutes to respond.
I know. I'll accept that response. I realize that sometimes ethics complaints are frivolous and there's a process to deal with that. And I do understand that several of those were dismissed. You know, the reason I guess I brought it up is it's it's kind of symbolic of a lot of things that have happened over the years in DeKalb County where because there's, I heard him list in three or four, there's actually six fines from the ethics campaign that he had to pay for six different occasions.
That is not factually correct, Andy.
Please let Mr. Yeoman finish.
I will. I'll also be correcting the record.
Okay.
Okay. So after this meeting, on my website, which is andyleads.com/RobertDoesn't, I'll post all of the, the information about everything that I'm saying. So there was six violations. They were both $150 apiece. And he paid $9,000 in attorney bills out of his campaign account to defend those. And, you know, I think the people that donate, like myself, that used to donate to the campaign, we expect those things to go towards, you know, promoting effective government in the county. And outside of that, I don't have any further comment. I'll accept his response to, as being truthful.
Thank you. Mr. Yeoman, a question for you.
Dan, I'd like to respond to that.
I'll give you one minute to respond, sir.
Thank you very much. So unlike my opponent, I acknowledge the errors that I have made and I don't run away from the mistakes that I've made. My opponent has had some incidents that happened since qualifying where he has taken to social media and blamed other people for his actions. That is not, that is not ethical leadership. That is not good governance. That is not responsible governance by any stretch of the imagination. I don't think the residents of District One or of DeKalb County in general want someone that's going to gaslight them when they make a mistake and try and put blame on someone else. Thank you.
Well, let's, let's talk about that because that was going to be my next question for Andy Yeoman. Andy, a few days after qualifying, you were arrested and accused of driving under the influence. The person that you hit in your vehicle in that incident was hospitalized, had surgery. You've made some statements about it on Facebook. What, what do you have to say to the public that would shed further light on that incident? You've posted video, statements saying that you have video that you claim more or less exonerates you or, or makes it appear that you share blame or I'm not really sure how to interpret it. So I guess my question is, why, what else can you add to that incident? And do you think that you were still fit to serve in public office after being accused of driving under the influence of alcohol?
Sure. I don't mind addressing this and I've never hidden from anything or tried to play blame on anybody. During spring break last month, I had several friends that came into the week, the Friday before spring break. We were leaving for Florida on a long plane trip on the 24th to go to Florida and we, you know, as a lot of people do, as they're reacquainted with friends, we went out, we had a good time. We were probably out too much, having too much fun. Like, like a lot of people do, I suppose as well, we slept that off and sobered up quite a bit and it's happened at 6:30 in the morning. We're heading back home after doing all those things. And unfortunately, it was dark, it was rainy and I did strike a vehicle that was stopped in the middle blocking two lanes of traffic on a state highway. She was cited for obstructing the flow of traffic. And I don't say this to blame any victim, but anybody that night was going to hit her. I mean, it was, it was in a curve where you couldn't see. It just so happened to be, you know, myself because of the nature of the incident, you know, they tested and I think it was, you know, two tenths over the limit. But, you know, and I understand that she received some injuries and, and I've already settled with her insurance company where she has paid for my injuries and to replace my vehicle. Now, the rest of this will happen in due course, but what I want to say is I'm running in the Democrat primary and I thought that the Democrat Party moved on from this, you know, tough-on-crime platform of the 1980s, you know, back in the 19, or back in the 1990s. And it was sickening then when Democrats did it and it's on the wrong side of history today. And I'd be happy to talk about some of the things, changes we've made in the city of Doraville. But it looks like I'm out of time.
Yeah, you had 15 seconds, but for the record, the finger means you got 30 seconds. That's my church finger. It's our very sophisticated timekeeping system here at Decaturish. We've missed a lot of money in it. Robert Patrick, you have two minutes to respond to that.
It's puzzling. The social media post he had put out there sort of said, you know, make sure when you have your fancy expensive car that you have a, have a dash cam just to prove your reaction time. I don't know many people in their 40s that frankly are drunk and blow a .112, which is 40% over the legal limit at 6:30 in the morning. That, that is puzzling. As a father who has raised three children in DeKalb County, that's, that's a menace on the roads. You know, I'm trying to teach my girls in a couple of years how to drive. That, that's just not, that's just not the type of behavior that we need to have. And that's reflective of someone, I think, that makes poor judgment and poor decisions, both in their personal life and ultimately in their professional life. It, it just, I don't know how else to address the issue. That young lady, from what you had said, had a concussion. I think some other additional injuries that go with it. And I guess to the point on tough-on-crime, I don't know of many people that would be able to get a ride home from the Doraville Police Department as opposed to going to jail. Someone did an open records request and found out that of the 90, pardon me, of the 90 D Y cases that Doraville had since January 1st, 2023 to current, three people had gotten the ride home from the police department as opposed to going to the DeKalb County jail. You know, as a Democrat, I'm not sure how we get past the idea that that doesn't smack of privilege. It, it's just, it's mind-boggling. It's mind-boggling. I don't think I would have that level of opportunity. And I also sort of feel like when you are an elected official, you're held to a higher standard. You're more scrutinized than anyone else. And the notion that you got a free ride home from the police department, it just, it just doesn't seem right.
Mr. Yeoman, would you like a minute to respond, sir?
No, I've said all I need to say. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I said, no, I've said everything I need to say. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next topic, we'll start with Robert Patrick on this one. What is your opinion of the proposed Public Safety Training Center, also known as COP City? You have two minutes.
Oh, so I know it's controversial and I know that the message that has gone out has been not overly supportive of, of COP City, the Atlanta Trading Facility. But I look at it more from an economic development instrument. And that's going to be $90 million put into a community that has not had any economic development in 80 years. I think that's going to be a game changer when it comes to housing. I think that's going to be a game changer when it comes to retail opportunities. And I think at the end of the day, that that's going to put pressure on the Board of Education also to improve their game for their residents. Interesting fact, since both Andy and I used to represent the city of Doraville, back in the 1940s, commissioner, the commissioner at the time actually made the million-dollar investment to bring in water and sewer to DeKalb County. We were the largest water or sewer county south of the Virginias. Doraville got the 24-inch water main and Constitution George, I believe, got a six-inch water main. It was that water main, that infrastructure that brought development to North DeKalb as opposed to South DeKalb. And so it's been 80 years since that development spark happened in North DeKalb and it's now finally making its way to South DeKalb. When it comes to a lot of the environmental quality issues, someone that used to work in a planning department, the requirements under the current stormwater codes will clean up a vast majority of the concerns for environmental issues that are being mentioned when it comes to tree canopy density, quality of the trees that are there, native species. It's sort of a win in all the ways that you would expect. Again, economic development, jobs, housing, grocery stores to address food deserts. So in my opinion, it's a win for the community.
Thank you. Andy Yeoman, same question. What's your opinion of Public Safety Training Center, also known as COP City?
Sure. First of all, I'll say that I believe that fire, police and EMS, they need the best training possible. But DeKalb County is not a partner to the COP City or the Atlanta Police Foundation are that they're calling COP City. And the reason is DeKalb County already has a police, fire and EMS training facility. Now sadly, the story of this facility is the same story as our water utility. It's the same story as our stormwater utility. It's the same story as our sewer utility. It's the same story as almost everything else in DeKalb County. It's been neglected for decades. DeKalb County refuses to lead and address the challenges until it's at a crisis level and anything that happens. And even then sometimes, sometimes even they wait for a federal judge and EPA, you know, decree to tell them that they have to change their ways. And so I would advocate for improving our existing facilities instead of tearing down a forest to build a new one. And I'll be honest with you tonight. I don't think, based on how toxic that project is, that the jurisdictions involved in COP City will ever be able to ensure it. And it's just going to be a giant money pit for the agencies and jurisdictions that are involved in that. So I stand with the residents, as the commissioner said, south to cab that are tired of being dumped on ecologically by questionable projects. The same thing is happening in District One by prioritizing massive expansions to PDK Airport for billionaires' personal aircraft over helping the people in the district that are along the lowest-income census box on Beaufort Highway. We're seeing the same thing all over the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, I may address that?
One minute, sir.
All right. So I have had many conversations with some neighborhood advocates that are against PDK. Commissioner Ted Terry seems to be giving lessons to my opponent on PDK. Want to be very clear, there is no expansion of PDK. To expand the runways at PDK would mean either relocating Beaufort Highway, Clermont Road, Dresden Drive, demolishing Plaza Fiesta or Shambly Dunwoody Road. None of that is being considered. There's no conversation about expanding the airport runways. This is simply building hangars, which actually would work to reduce the number of flights coming out of PDK. So I know that's been a misconception that some neighborhood advocates, a commissioner, and now obviously my opponent have been spreading, but that's just factually not correct. And you can check the AJC newspaper article that was written about that where they went in and explained this is the perspective of one group, but it does not face reality.
Mr. Yeoman, I'll give you a minute to respond and then we have to move on.
Sure. So I am open, Commissioner Patrick, I am open to the notion that building more hangar spaces will create less traffic in PDK and the data is public. Show, find the information, show it to us. No news media outlet, yourself included, or any of the county, has been able to say that that's true. If it's true, I'm open to this novel concept that more, more storage of planes is going to do that. And if you're saying that they're coming in to drop somebody off and they're leaving to drop somebody else off and they're going somewhere else, show us the data. That, that, the data says what airplanes, what airports these places are going to. It's never, it's never shown to be true. So I'm glad that the county is going through the environmental, the economical study to, to, to do this. This is a PDK refuses to sell unleaded fuel, which a lot of planes take anymore. I just mean, PDK is the largest lead for lunar in the southeast United States.
Respectfully, Dan, I'd like to give a little correction on that statement as well.
We're going to do that in this next exchange because, because this is a good segue into this question. Andy Yeoman, on your website and in your Q and A, I believe, and other places, you have alleged that Robert Patrick benefited financially from the expansion of PDK. What, what is the evidence you have for that claim? You have two minutes.
I've never, I've never read that claim and if I did, I'm open to clarify that. But what I have said in a previous forum that currently DeKalb County has an RFP that is open for a company for a 50-year lease that, you know, it's going to be several hundred million dollars for the county. And Robert Patrick has accepted campaign donation from that company, which is an open procurement with the
I believe, I hate to, I'll pause because I want to give you full time to address this. But I believe the specific allegation was that Robert Patrick had a home that he sold that was in the extended. So what is the basis that you have for that claim? Explain that to us.
Well, so that's, that's not, he didn't benefit economically from that. So Robert Patrick, I said he lived two blocks from me, myself. We, I live right under the PDK flight path. So did Robert Patrick. He sold, which anybody's able to do in the United States. It's simple property rights. He sold his house and moved to Dunwoody. He's as far as in a donation get without getting Sandy Springs away from all of this. And as soon as he did that, he started advocating for the expansion of PDK. And it would have, historically would have flown right over his old house. So I'm not upset that he sold his house, that he left the neighborhood and decided to move to Dunwoody. But it's, I was just, you know, calling that out that that's, the timing was, was exact. He did that and immediately that's what happened.
Sure. All right. Robert Patrick, two minutes.
A tried and true Doraville tactic is always to make personal attacks. Andy was part of a team that took down a friend of mine, former mayor Donna Pittman, and it was always lead with a personal attack. They would attack her hair. They would attack the way she dressed, the clothes she wore. It eventually got into the vehicles that she drove. Andy, the house was too small. The amount of cost that it would take to repair the house versus simply moving into another house is what the final decision was. At the end of the day, where I moved to in Dunwoody is still in the flight path for PDK. I still hear the airplanes flying over my house. And when they do the flight lessons, it's part of the loop where they fly over repeatedly. So I have not somehow left, left Doraville or left the flight path and said, you know, so sorry for everyone else. I am still a DeKalb County resident. I am as much affected by the airport as anyone else is. But that doesn't take away from the fact that the airport is worth the economic development investments that are there. At the end of the day, that airport brings in At the end of the day, that airport brings in uh economic development from the surrounding counties. Uh, I believe Waffle House has a corporate hangar there. There are a lot of corporations that use that place. But there's also a lot of small private uh airplanes that fly out of there as well. And something that my um, my opponent uh does not seem to want to acknowledge is is that the amount of flights that are currently happening at PDK are nowhere's near where they were at the high times. And the two high peaks were uh before the dot com uh bust in, I guess, the late nineties and as well as before the Great Recession. The projections that were included in the master plan that many people did not want to acknowledge uh talk about at by twenty forty getting close to where we were uh back in the nineties and the early two thousands. So the notion that there's some type of an expansion is just not the case. The notion that somehow or another I'm not affected by PDK or the noise is just not true.
Thank you.
And again, I know that's a tried and true doorbell tactic.
Thank you.
But um, I suspect people do see through that. Thank you.
Let's move on to the next topic. Let's talk about
Can I just say?
I'll give you one minute. I'll give you one minute.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't need a minute. I just need fifteen seconds. I I don't, that's a, I guess it's a good talking point. Donna Pittman's a friend of mine. She called me twice today. Um, her yard sign, yard sign is in my yard. You can look back to the twenty nineteen C C D Rs I gave her money for her campaign. I don't know where that came from.
Yep, yep. Somehow you helped help the other side too.
All right, let's move on. Uh, let's move on to something that I'm fired up about. You ready? Uh, I got this lovely bottle of water from, I don't know if I can see this because it's Zoom, uh, from DeKalb County Watershed, uh, because I had a uh an outage on my street. We've had two this year. Uh, I don't want to talk about what specifically happened on my street. I do want to talk about watershed. Uh, starting with Robert Patrick, Robert, what is your opinion of the current state of watershed? And what can be done to make it better? You have two minutes.
So um I guess several different points. One, uh, a problem that watershed has, which is shared by all departments within DeKalb County, is I just don't think we're well staffed. Uh, it is difficult right now to uh attract and retain qualified people. Um, and so the team members that we do have are really doing a, no pun intended, a yeoman's job uh in in the work that they do. Um, and so if you have a very competent, very qualified team of people that are working, uh, there's a certain level of workload that they can handle. And um, they will adjust to accommodate any other demands that are out there. Uh, but at some point they're going to need more resources and that's going to mean more staff. Uh, with the watershed in general, you know, it's important to remember that much of the county's uh infrastructure is is antiquated. Um, to a certain extent, DeKalb County suffers winter syndrome, which is, we were the first to to develop. We got all the new stuff, water and sewer, roads, sidewalks, housing. Um, but uh, we never kept up with the investments either on the public side or in the original property owners uh that own the property. And so over time, uh, the system has has degraded to the point where, as was mentioned, uh, yeah, the federal courts have had to come in. Um, when I was a a former Doraville Councilman running for the seat, you know, I made note that it was gross to have uh all the volume of sewer spills that were happening. It's problematic to have a water system that uh if it breaks, anyone south of that water break is is affected. And so part of the um efforts that we've been working on is to one, modernize the system, uh, get it to compliance with the federal requirements. Again, that's the sewer system. Uh, also looking at water, the water system itself and bringing it up to compliance. Uh, it is a slow process, uh, as we've all had to deal with the supply chain issues, materials for the pipes, as well as the labor has been in short supply. So um
Thank you. That's time.
The the, we have a good water sewer department and our staff is
Thank you. I know they are hardworking over there at watershed. I've seen it myself. Uh, Andy Yeoman, uh, two minutes, same question.
Do you repeat the question you were specifically about the water?
Absolutely. Yeah. So my 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 question is, is what's your current opinion of watershed and what do you think could be done to make it better?
Okay, I thought was wondering if you were asking specifically about water.
Well, I I I was, the segue was that I had a a a water main break on my street and it was just, that was the segue, but I'm really talking about watershed, which affects everybody. What what's your opinion of how watershed is currently? What do you think could be done to make it better?
Sure. So it 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 all gets better. It has to get better. We're, um, I think five years after the consent decree was originally supposed to be completed. Um, and and I realize it's iterative process we have to go through and and it it has to get better and it will get better. Um, but what I'll say is they, it's not over. Um, I I see the press releases that are sent out from the county, you know, bragging about, I guess, the amount of money that's being spent and how it's better than ever. Um, but what we're not talking about is the water system is almost as old, if not just as old as the sewer system. And the only reason that the sewer system is going first is because a federal judge in the EPA told us that it had to go first. And to to finance the um, the sewer projects that we've done so far has amounted to, um, it was a six percent increase last year. I think there was you know, several years ago, there was another five, six percent increase. And you know, what's it going to take to restore? If it's that much to do the sewer, what's it going to take to do the water? And and um, there's really no comprehensive planning. There's no strategic planning being done right now to address the water. What happens when we forget the sewer pump sets? Trust me, the sewer is the priority because there's sewer flowing into the park next to my house every time it rains continually. Um, but it's going to take a a board of commissioners that honestly, let me kind of get back, it's going to take a CEO um, that has the uh priority, much like Shirley Franklin did when she ran for mayor of the city of Atlanta. She wanted to be the sewer mayor to fix the things, and DeKalb County is going to need a champion like Shirley Franklin.
Thank you.
If I could follow up on that, Dan.
I'll I'll give you one minute, then we do have to move on. So we have other questions.
So uh, in a statement from CEO Thurman, the number of spills has increased, but the overall volume is down significantly. I believe he quoted seventy-two percent volume decrease in the amount of spills. So uh, just want the residents to realize DeKalb County staff has been a champ. Water and sewer has been on top of it. They are doing the best that is available, not the best they can, the best that with the resources that are available. And we have pulled down quite a few resources. Uh, unfortunately, rate increases were required uh to be able to pay for those uh upgrades that have to happen. You know, uh, when it comes to water quality, another issue is is the amount of septic tanks that were built uh in DeKalb County. What's also sort of troubling is is that I think uh just down from uh uh my opponent's house, there was a development that had five houses originally configured that were going to be tied into water and sewer as well as uh an upsized road. Those were instead, uh, that plan was changed and allowed to become a septic tank uh development.
Uh, Mr. Yeoman, I'm going to give you one minute and then we have to move on. If you want to respond to anything.
Nothing else added this.
Okay. Uh, next question, starting uh with Andy Yeoman. What kinds of investments should be made in public parks in this district? Two minutes.
Sure. So I I heard you ask that question in the last forum and and I think District One is 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 a little different because most of District One is municipalized and it has city parks. Uh, there are some, I know the Commissioner is working on a um, uh, a plan at Pleasantale Park, which is much needed and um the uh, what I'd like to see really is outside it, unless we're going to municipalize the entire county, which I don't think is likely at this point, um, DeKalb County does need to spend money on redoing its parks and and I said this, it was either your questionnaire or another one, actually it was the Peachtree Greenway questionnaire that um we can't continue to take elected officials seriously, continuing to say, oh, we're going to spend sploßed on this. And and when we changed from the baby sploß to the new sploß, they removed some of the controls. And unfortunately, all that means is we're going to have fewer roads repaired and we're going to put more money into parks. I'm all for spending money in parks. But really what we need to do is have another countywide bond referendum for parks. And let's kind of put a project list together uh for all the parks and all the cities and all the county, separate it out just like we do for sploß by a per capita allocation and let people vote on it. And what that will do is two things. Number one, it will gaze public interest in that and on public interest in the product and the project list. And we we'll be able to see is, you know, really what the priorities are. We had a meeting in Doraville and we talked, it was about the Peachtree Greenway and and the Greenway supporters were there. And even the Greenway supporters were like, this is a priority for us, but we really want you to fix this sidewalk over by this elementary school first. Uh, so it's it's that type of conversation having with the community where if you've got a dollar, what do you, you want to spend twenty-five cents on this and ten cents on this and five cents on something else? Uh, we need to have that conversation with the community, um, both in the cities and the county. And I really do think that let's 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 stop joking ourselves that we're going to do any meaningful things with sploß and let's have a bond referendum and vote it up or down.
Thank you. Robert Patrick, same question. Parks in this district.
So parks are phenomenally important. Uh, as I've said in other forums, um, you know, during the pandemic, that was a great way to, for everyone to keep their sanity is to go for a walk. Uh, ideally on a trail, but in a sidewalk, and then going to a park is a great way to just to release the stress. Um, my family especially benefited from that. Uh, with the notion of splosts, you know, sploß does have its its ability to help. Um, it can't cover everything. Uh, and as the, as uh my opponent had mentioned, uh, yes, uh, the uh current sploß we have is an unrestricted sploß. And it is true that not as many roads are going to get paved, but it is also true that important things such as enhancing the animal shelter at seven and a half million dollars. Uh, a mental health facility at fifteen million dollars. And again, those sploß dollars used strategically are intended to be the seed money or the match money for grants from either the state or the federal to bring in those incentives and those developments into our into our jurisdiction. Um, there are, in addition to Pleasantale Park, there are two other locations that I have been looking at to have uh uh new parks put in, actually three new locations that I've been looking to have parks put in. Um, each of them have some, uh, I'll call it some hair on the property and some issues that go with it uh that we are working through. But yes, parks uh are an absolute priority. Um, and then to the point I think Andy sort of alluded at is is, you know, um at the Board of Commissioners, you still have to get four votes to spend money and and some of the annexation conversations uh have uh frankly disrupted my ability to sort of move faster uh with some planning and some other economic activities in the area. But um absolutely, parks are a priority. Guess final thing to add into this, and this is something that hasn't really been talked about. Um, but our jail is in terrible shape. I shouldn't say terrible, terrible shape, but it is in need of uh either massive repair or possibly a replacement. Um, and so uh there has been talk of, you know, do we have a parks bond? But one of the questions comes up is, is, you know, we do have
That's time, Mr. Patrick. I'm sorry. Um, we we have to keep moving. Um, but the next question does start with you. So if you want to finish that up, this one you can. Uh, what can be done to improve uh pedestrian infrastructure in this district? Uh, we'll start with Robert Patrick.
Uh, that's a, that's a good question, and that's been a humongous priority uh at at two different Board of Commissioners meetings. Uh, we have had a woman who came in uh from out of state who is a uh pedestrian safety advocate. One of her friend's daughters had been uh hit and killed in a pedestrian incident, and I believe uh they still have not located the person who is responsible for that. So it is a tremendous issue. Uh, if you're on Pleasantale Road, uh, that is a five lane beast with an elementary school in front of it. Um, I worked to get a uh street light, a traffic light installed before the school, something that had been in need for over a decade, as I understand. That was the first thing that I've done for improvements in that area. Next, we're looking at getting mid block crossings along Pleasantale Road uh so that it can be a way to slow down traffic uh and make a safe area for people to cross the street. I should also note, uh, that area has quite a few people that are in wheelchairs and um it is harrowing to be on wheelchair uh trying to cross the street um, uh, in that community. As someone who drives that area uh frequently, as I patrol the district, um, I've also experienced people passing in the suicide lane. Um, and so that's where I've been calling and asking for the police to come in more frequently. But I also believe that rather than necessarily issuing tickets all the time, you can build the environment where it's safer. And so that's where the mid block crossings become a a great asset for the community. It will help control the traffic flow, um, much like what you see in Beaufort Highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Yeoman, same question. What can be done to improve pedestrian infrastructure in this district?
So a lot. I mean, the the Commissioner mentioned, you know, Pleasantale Road, obviously, which is in the unincorporated area, which is where I think he spends a lot of his time thinking about, but you know, Beaufort Highway is another one. We don't have a crossing that from Beaufort Highway to the under, over two eighty-five. Um, and we've made efforts in the last four years uh to get some federal earmark money from the Senator's Office to uh come up with a highway safety action plan. Uh, we've done the same thing. Uh, we were able to go work with Shambly on that. Um, and I think, you know, to answer the question directly is, that is exactly what is needed is someone that can work, um, really pull the the parties, all the cities together and with the unincorporated area and really prioritize these types of things. Um, is um, you know, I think the model aisle in Brookhaven was a, you know, sixteen million dollar thing. Sixteen million dollars for one mile could have done a lot of intersection improvements on Pleasantale. And um, and um, Beaufort Highway and and all of these major corridors, uh, Shambly Tucker Road, all these major corridors. So I think we um, unfortunately, uh, and that's the issue, I guess, that some people have with cities is there's a lot of silos and there's really nobody bringing it together. But what I'll say is there is a new opportunity next year. I understand that the uh the Academy Municipal Association, the executive director is going to retire, and I really hope that they, the mayors and the cities uh make a concerted effort to really hire somebody really, really good in that position that can start to really, because that was really the intent of the DMA is to get all the cities and the counties working together on these types of projects and and uh, you know, it's not a slight to the existing director, but he's, you know, retiring and he's he's on his way out. And I think we have an opportunity uh to really bring somebody new in that's going to work with all the cities and counties and really prioritize all these things and get get everyone working and brewing in the same boat.
Are you, are you, uh, this isn't a time to sponsor. Are are you talking about Bill Floyd?
Yes.
Oh, I did not realize Bill Floyd was, but I got to write that down. We got to do a story about that. Um, we we can't, we can't keep doing the back and forth, though. It's, we got other questions we got to do. Uh, Andy, we'll start this question with you. Uh, and if you want to respond in in the subsequent follow-ups, you're welcome to. Uh, Andy, what's your opinion of MARTA's current footprint in DeKalb County? And are there changes you would make to that footprint? You have two minutes.
Sure. So I um, I realize that the people tuning into this are in District One, um, but DeKalb County really has been slided with MARTA over the last, you know, twenty, thirty years, and I don't blame the people in South DeKalb, you know, Stonecrest, South of I twenty, for being frustrated with the county's current agreement with uh MARTA. I realize we just passed a new amendment with MARTA. Uh, there was one commissioner that voted against it. Uh, I'm not sure that, you know, just a a token no vote really moves the needle. Uh, but we need to have a conversation with MARTA and really determine um really what the priorities are. Are we going to do heavy rail of uh South of I twenty? If the answer is yes, then put it in the plan and let's work towards that and find a way to 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 fund it. If the answer is no, let's just say the answer is no and move on to something different, uh, whether that's um uh light rail or uh BRT, bus rapid transit, you know, rubber wheel, all those types of things. Uh, unfortunately, what's happened is there's been a polarizing issue into the cap commission. And this is my fault. This has existed for, you know, twenty years where there's this, you know, north, south, south divide and 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 why, you know, the why Decatur has a in Dunwoody and Doraville and Chambly have a MARTA station and and, you know, Lithonia and Stonecrest doesn't. Um, but we, um, I guess I would need more information in terms of, you know, you know, future amendments to MARTA, but we have got to get everyone in DeKalb County on the same page uh as to what we want in the county, um, and to really effect positive change in transit in DeKalb County.
Thank you. Robert Patrick, uh, two minutes, same question. What's your opinion of MARTA's current footprint and what changes would you make, if any?
Um, so again, uh, the fifteenth amendment was adopted before I came to office. Um, uh, that being said, I I do think that uh some type of mass transit expansion is going to be necessary. Uh, when I was a Doraville Councilman, I was able to participate in the top end mayor's discussions about ultimately bringing bus rapid transit from Tucker uh all the way over to the Cumberland CID with the notion of forty minute bus ride from Tucker to Cumberland CID to make stops all along the way uh to help sort of break the logjam that happens at uh Spaghetti Junction. Um, so that is something that would address things in District One. Uh, when it goes to South DeKalb, it is a little more complicated. Um, there are uh I'll say many people that are interested in the heavy rail component, and I think there is a way to get to the heavy rail component. Uh, but it does involve some rather intensive planning that brings in stormwater management for land acquisition, uh, economic development around South DeKalb Mall, uh, and some kind of connect, some type of connectivity that gets you over to um, Stonecrest Mall. Some of the challenges that are going to be there, though, is is there are some residential developments, large residential developments that would be in the area that would be affected. And so we also have to be cognitive of the fact that, you know, people don't like the government moving your house. And that ends up being part of the conversation. And then, of course, there is the expense. And again, I'm convinced that with the expense component, that can be addressed through a combination of federal money. Uh, but as well as uh bringing in developers that are willing to contribute to the buy-in in the development of that area. Uh, one more thing, just to, just to talk about sploß, you know, um, if a community has access to sploß and is is not happy with the sidewalk connectivity, it is important to remember that they did have access to about nine million dollars worth of sploß funding uh back in the day. And then finally, just one quick uh item, uh, Andy, I absolutely agree with you. If you can, if you can wrestle Brookhaven to give us sixteen million dollars to uh make pedestrian safety good in DeKalb County, uh, God bless you. Thank you.
Uh, Robert Patrick, we're going to start this question with you. Do you think DeKalb County should spend local money uh to create affordable housing?
Yes, I do. Um, we through Decide DeKalb, and I should say that I'm a board member with Decide DeKalb, uh, had an opportunity for some housing incentives. Um, it was a tax abatement. Uh, I know my opponent uh suddenly was against it, although he was for it in Dunwoody, uh, in Doraville. Um, and there were two county commissioners who uh privately said they were for it and then turned around and said no. Uh, but yes, I do think it is a priority, uh, whether you're in a city uh and the local development authority is able to make it happen or you're in unincorporated DeKalb County. Or you're in unincorporated DeKalb County, or if there can be some partnership thereof, absolutely, you know, uh, we can bring in phenomenal jobs. We almost lost Pepsi. Uh, there were some incentives that brought, uh, brought them back to the table and brought more jobs to the community. But at the end of the day, you can have great jobs, but you, if you don't have a place for the people to live, you end up having a problem that sort of generates or multiplies the homelessness issues that we're dealing with right now. So absolutely, yes, I do think it's a, it's a priority. Um, my own sense is that, you know, uh, the existing single family residential neighborhoods should be protected and honored. Uh, which then means that with the sort of surplus of office and commercial, uh, spaces, that those end up looking at as, uh, opportunities for redevelopment to bring in, uh, new housing options for residents. Of course, as you build up, the costs go up. And so that's where developers, uh, look back to the county or back to the, some jurisdiction for financial support. Um, it has to be, it has to be worthwhile. Um, but at the end of the day, you know, bringing in housing options for, uh, our residents is important. Um, and housing options even for government employees, be they police officers, firefighters, teachers. Um, you know, we need more housing options all around.
Thank you. Andy Yeoman, same question. Do you think DeKalb County should spend local money to create affordable housing?
Well, when you say local money, is specifically about tax abatements as well, or is that a separate question?
Uh, I think, I think that it's actually came from a, a group that is a housing advocacy group. Um, and we, we had talked about some of the things that they're interested in. I think they mean actual spend, uh, putting county resources into it.
Right. So, um, the answer is yes, and, and but it's, you know, probably a lot of asterisks after that. And what I, when I say that is DeKalb County is the recipient of all the, um, uh, block grant money and stuff that comes from the, uh, federal government, uh, for DeKalb County. And I think all of the cities, um, I'm not actually sure. I know if it's over 50,000, they can do their own, but I believe it's all the cities. And that was obviously would be public money that, that needs to go towards affordable housing. The other thing that we need to do, um, is reinstitute the land bank. And I understand that one of the commissioners, uh, has, uh, put some of her, uh, or one of the former commissioners has put some of her discretionary accounting commission funds towards reinstituting that land bank. Um, and I won't get into in 30 seconds what a land bank is or how it's beneficial, but it's good. It would be good to reinstitute that. And obviously I think there's, there's, uh, more that we can do from a, uh, housing authority standpoint. Um, you know, regarding tax abatements, um, we never did a tax abatement in Doraville on property that they didn't own. Um, and that was really the issue I think a lot of people have with the one in Druid Hills. Even a year later, they still don't own that property. Yet the county gave them a tax abatement and it's, uh, you know, it's the optics of it as well. And it's the, it's a $60 billion company that actually owns Hudson Yards in York City. And it'll, of all people that probably didn't need money to do a housing development on Druid Hills Road, it was probably them. But, um, I wasn't involved in those discussions. I'm not going to second guess his opinion. He's a director on the authority like everyone else was and made a decision with the information that they represented. Um, but, um, specifically about local money, I would say yes.
Okay.
Dan, I just add, uh, I agree with Andy and I wouldn't second guess his decisions that he made at the old Kmart property in, in Doraville either.
This is good. You are going to have some very interesting holiday parties in District One this year. Let me tell you, um, I, I wish I could be a fly on the wall. Uh, Andy Yeoman, uh, start this question with you. Uh, how will you work with other DeKalb County officials to, uh, address dilapidated properties in District One neighborhoods?
Sure. So you said work with other agencies or work with.
Work with other DeKalb officials.
With other DeKalb officials. Okay. Yeah. So I understand that the cap county really, I want to give the DeKalb county some credit here. They have made some, a considered effort in the last couple of years, uh, by making a dent into the, uh, dilapidated properties across DeKalb County. The way, the, the way that they've done that is they have created a, uh, a separate docket in the, in the court system or in the magistrate court system. Uh, where Judge McNeil, uh, hears those cases on a fairly regular basis. And that's her focus. It's the only thing on that, 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 uh, calendar. And by and large, I think they, they work with a lot of these property owners and the ones that they can't work with are usually the ones that are fairly complicated into, you know, probates and things like that. Which are usually the ones that they get a lot of the public attention. Um, they're working through those issues. And so do I wish it was quicker? Yes. Uh, do I think that there's probably a whole lot more that the county can do? No. Can they work even quicker? I would hope so. And that's where I would work with the county, uh, with the court system and, uh, the chief magistrate, Anderson, uh, to, uh, come up with some programs if, if there's, you know, more at the county. I said, that's the same thing with the animals discussion is if, put us a, present a program, um, tell us what you need, if it needs, you know, having more contract judges or whatever, and we'll put it in the budget, amendment to the budget and we'll do that. I mean, the county, I watched the budget process this year and the county commission pretty much gave any amendment that a department asked for. And I don't say that as a bad thing. It was a good thing because they were able to explain what it was that they needed, what the benefit was to the county. And, uh, they made those changes. So, um, I, um, look forward to, you know, making it better, but I, I want to give some credit to the county. They have made a, an effort recently to make better improvements.
Thank you. Robert Patrick, same question. Dilapidated properties in your community. How will you work with the county officials to address them?
Um, so actually I have been working with county officials to address them. Uh, probably one of the better examples was over on Palladium Drive in the North Briar Cliff, uh, neighborhood. Uh, there was a, uh, a tree that had fallen off, I guess, about two or three years ago. Uh, and it literally smacked the front of the house off. Uh, the property owner, um, uh, put some tarp on it to encapsulate it. Uh, but after a few months, that doesn't work. Uh, it was part of the old District Two, uh, community. And when we redistricted, uh, that became part of District One. As soon as I found out about that, I got with the legal department. Um, some of the challenges are though, is, is, uh, you have to go through court proceedings in order to demolish someone else's property. And, uh, that is, I would say deliberately intended to be slow, onerous, uh, and difficult. Simply because you don't want to have the government coming in on your property and destroying it. Even if it's an abandoned property, we still have to be acknowledging of the constitution and property rights. So that said, um, I think it's a probably about close to a six month process that we were able to get that house taken care of. Uh, I have been working with staff on another property, another couple of properties. As a matter of fact, that it has been slow and painful. Uh, but, uh, having good relations with the CEO is very helpful. Um, and so I think that one of the properties that I've been, uh, dealing with some residents on, uh, we may have, uh, some, uh, light at the end of the tunnel and get something handled relatively quickly.
Thank you. We got time for one more question and then we're going to go into, uh, closing statements. We'll start, uh, the final question with you, Robert Patrick. Uh, what will be your approach to constitutional offices in the county, like the sheriff's office? Will you scrutinize their budgets and provide some level of oversight of what they do? Two minutes.
Uh, that's a, that's a great question. So, um, not sure if you're aware of this, Dan, uh, but sheriffs under the constitution and backed by the Georgia Supreme Court do not have to follow the budget that VOC, uh, approves for them. Uh, they have complete discretion over their budget. So that said, uh, it is my continued hope that with good relations, uh, between all of the constitutional offices that we can work together and come up with, um, budgeting that is appropriate, yet affordable. Uh, you know, as mentioned with the jail, uh, there are lots of repairs that need to happen. Uh, but we're still waiting for the, I believe, a report that's underway, which is going to basically tell us, is it worth saving the jail? Or is it something that we should take down and look to rebuilding? Um, but ultimately, uh, the constitutionals have their latitude, um, and, uh, they have the ability to use their funds as they choose.
Thank you. Uh, Andy Yeoman, same question.
Yeah. So it's, uh, well, obviously what the commissioner said is true, but where, um, I'll kind of pivot this a little bit in government. You know, one of the, the recommendations that the Trotter Review Commission made was to actually give subpoena power to the board of commissioners. And that was something that, that raised a lot of, uh, fears amongst the commissioners. And it's, it, I think it's probably the reason it's not on the ballot this November, that board of officials have moved that forward. And what I'll say about the sheriff and the other constitutional officers is, yes, it's, that is true. But yes, there can be oversight and wouldn't it be nice to have those types of powers to have the oversight? In the AJC this morning, I read that the, um, Fulton County Sheriff's Department had a $200,000 Mercedes Sprinter van that was purchased. And we're finding out about it three years later. And, and, and that's Fulton County, not DeKalb County. But it, it goes back to the, I guess, the notion is where's the oversight for this? Just because they're a constitutional officer that can do their own budget, doesn't mean that the county can't have an oversight that looks over these types of things. Whether that be internal through an internal auditor program or external through some sort of a, uh, you know, citizens board. I would need more, more information about, you know, the dynamics and how that would work. But, um, I do think that there needs to be more oversight, not just in, in the jail, but in our, uh, court systems and, and some of these, uh, accountability programs and things that are in court, uh, measuring the effectiveness, uh, of those on a regular basis and to see how those things are doing.
Thank you. Uh, this has been an entertaining forum, uh, debate. I appreciate you both. We're going to give you each two minutes to make a closing statement. We're going to start with Andy Yeoman.
Sure. Uh, well, thanks, Dan. Uh, thanks to Decaters for hosting this forum tonight. Um, I hope that all of you that are listening that, uh, are, found this beneficial, continue to support your local news and for making these things possible. Um, I promise that I will work hard every day, uh, to improve the lives of every living being in this county. Whether it's a person or it's an animal or it's anything else, um, or it's a visitor that's, uh, in one of our facilities. Um, I'll serve, uh, the people, whether they're residents or county employees or incorporated areas or unincorporated areas. Uh, we have a once in a generational opportunity, uh, on May 21st, early voting starts on Monday to elect, uh, regardless of what happens in this race, there's going to be three brand new county commissioners. I'm running to be the fourth new commissioner and, um, they, that's, there's two potential headlines that can come out of this on Decaturish on the 22nd. We're going to wake up and the headline is going to be four more years, or the headline is going to be, uh, the cap county elects a new majority commission and a new CEO. And I really think there can be some positive things that, that happen, uh, from that. Uh, the final thing that I want to say is, um, the, um, I lost my train of thought there. Um, the, um, the final thing I want to say is, uh, the, with the, both the commissions and CEOs, uh, they're all running in the, that's what I was going to say. They're all running in the Democrat primary. I'm getting so many people that are reaching out to me that are Republicans, that are, that vote nonpartisan, that vote Democratic. You need to know that if you're concerned about the county and you're concerned about the county commission's race and you're concerned about the CEO, you're concerned about the sheriff, you're concerned about the district attorney, you're concerned about the chief magistrate, all of those things are going to be on the Democrat ballot. So if you're concerned about all those things, you have to vote in the Democrat ballot. And I'd be happy to stand here tonight and tell you all the reasons you should be doing that anyway. But it's important that whatever you do, that you get out this election and, and vote. And I'm asking for your support in the District One race. And early voting, as I mentioned, does start on Monday at the Tucker and Dunwoody libraries and at the Shambly Senior Center. Uh, for more information about myself, you can visit my website, which is andyleeds.com.
Thank you. Robert Patrick, two minutes to make your closing statement.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Dan, again, for hosting this. Much appreciated. Uh, to my opponent, it's been, uh, it's been a, a good, uh, evening talking with you. Uh, it has been an honor serving as your county commissioner over the last four years, and I look forward to serving you again for the next four years. Uh, as we work to fix things, fix things like planning and sustainability, streamlining our business license processes, attracting good businesses that bring good quality jobs to DeKalb County is a continued priority that we'll have. Uh, hiring and retaining capable staff that provide the services and at the service level that our residents and businesses expect. Uh, we'll continue to work with law enforcement to ensure that all DeKalb County residents are treated fairly inequitably. Uh, we need to make sure that policies in place are in unison and that there are no special privileged treatments for any DeKalb County residents. I will continue to listen and learn from you, our residents and our businesses on how to keep us safe and secure. I ask for your continued support as we build a brighter future for all of us. And, uh, sort of to follow up with my opponent's statement, yes, uh, January, or pardon me, uh, when the new election happens, we'll see. Um, is it credible, capable, reliable leadership, or is it someone else that's dealing with a lawsuit? Thank you.
Well, thank you both, uh, for participating. This has been the Decaturish.com District One DeKalb County Commission Forum. You can find all of our coverage at Decaturishvotes.com. If you appreciate these opportunities that we're providing you to hear from our candidates, please visit supportyourlocalnews.com and become a paying subscriber. Uh, we need your support to keep doing what we're doing and providing these opportunities. If you're watching us on Twitch, if you're watching us on Facebook, stay put because we're about to do, uh, the District Five debate. Uh, we'll be back in 30 minutes with that. Until then, everybody have a nice night.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.